For 2 East Main Street, the staff have to report.
Yes, we do. The property owner is Connor here and he has requested the planning commission to review exterior changes to the commercial building at 2 East Main Street. Property is in B3 Central Business District. OHI lists the property as a neoclassical building built circa 1913. So Connor comes before the planning commission with request to replace existing awnings with new black canvas, add six contemporary light fixtures, paint the existing window trim SW6258 Tricorn Black, paint the employee entrance facade SW7011 Natural Choice. The owner would also like to install a wall sign measuring 48 square feet. Material of the wall sign will be aluminum composite and will be a black background with white lettering. The owner would also like to install window signs totaling 52 square feet. Material is opaque vinyl. I do have color samples here. It's just black and kind of a cream color if anybody would like to see them. Staff does recommend approval. The updates will be a pleasant contrast to the stone material of the building. Exterior updates will put a finishing touch on the interior renovations currently taking place.
This is before us for historic district review, is that correct?
Correct.
One thing bothers me then in your presentation Shannon, you said that the light fixtures will be contemporary. How does contemporary mesh with historic district?
They're called contemporary on the listing here in your pocket. What was given to me, they're basically a block cylinder approximately this tall that the light comes from the top and the bottom.
Has there been any investigation to see if we get the same lighting effect with a less contemporary fixture?
No, I did not do that. However, I know that there have been recent renovations within the past two years that have used the same light fixtures.
Where at?
Where at?
210 South Market Street.
Oh, next Detroit Avenue building. Any other questions or staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So when I'm looking at these renderings, there are a couple of areas, both on Main Street and in the quad, where there is proposed use of the outdoor right-of-way area. That is not part of this application.
That is not part of this application. Neither is the railing-type structure above the employee entrance. That may be something that comes in the future, but that is not part of this presentation.
A railing in front of a...
So the employee entrance is a one-story and there's like a white strip in your rendering. Right above that, there's like a black railing sitting on top of that. That's not being proposed at this time.
If it's not being proposed, the fact that I still can't see it doesn't make any difference, does it?
I guess it's rather confusing to be asked to approve something and what we're looking at is not what we're approving.
I'm not sure what you mean, Chair.
Well, you've got the fenced-in patio area, you've got the horizontal awning that's not included.
I think what's going to be included is the stuff that's under the proposal.
Right.
That first paragraph.
It's my understanding that the rendering was put together as an overall plan for the building, but items are being done sort of grouped together and not all items are being done at the current time. So there's more pressing needs of signage, updating the facade some, and then the rest of the items will come at a later date.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So part of the signage that's being proposed is in the windows.
That's correct.
The windows look like they are, are they tinted? You can still see through them?
The vinyl that will be placed on the windows is opaque.
Well, opaque means you can't see through it.
That's correct.
Well, that's, isn't that an issue under our sign code? And especially as it relates to safety issues? Fire and police, where you cannot block more than a certain percentage?
I would have to, I would need to see an example of how opaque opaque is in this case.
Well, translucent, there's transparent, translucent, and opaque. What I remember from rudimentary science. Transparent, you can see through. Translucent, you can kind of see through. Opaque, not really.
You're correct.
So we're looking at wall signs of 48 square feet plus 52 square feet.
The building is allowed to have a total of 100 square feet of signage. For wall signage and window signage.
And the, and the glass, the window area adds up to how much?
The total window area signage, when you include only the part that's the sign itself, is 52 square feet.
So it's right at the 100?
Yes.
So the part of the sign that you're discounting is the rest of the opaque area?
Yeah, because there's no commercial message on there and it's not an integral part of the sign.
But it is blocking the windows completely?
It is blocking the windows completely, yes.
Is there a representative of the sign company or is Jess here? She is.
Please identify yourself, please.
Hi, Jess Nielsen, 928 Haberhill Drive. I'm the owner of the Levine Design Studio who worked on this design project. I can speak to any of these elements here. First, I'll start with the window graphics. So do they have the sheet that goes into detail about the windows with the sign application? Yeah, but do you have the windows individually? Yes. Okay, so the glass will be clear. The only opaque part is the black line and the lettering. So you'll be able to see through the glass completely except for the outline and the letters.
In this, it looks like it's, okay, the white portion's white.
It's just clear. It's clear glass, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's transparent?
A part of it is. A part of it's opaque.
Okay. Talk about the lighting if you would.
So like you mentioned, the lighting is the same that was used on the MB Level building. And I can also speak to something that's being under review for the state for the Coleman Allen Building. It's a similar lighting that would be proposed and approved by the State of Ohio for that. Because we're not proposing an exact replica of something that would have been there when the building was built, it's the state's recommendation to go forward with something more contemporary. So if you're not imitating it exactly, go for something that's current. So that was our approach there.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Commission have any other questions, staff? Commission want to take action on the matter?
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Capper?
Yes.
It's approved.
Next matter on the agenda, historic district application for 215 West Main Street. Staff have an appointment. Yes, sir, we do. We'll set up the laptop so you can see the presentation here, one second. Do you need a pointer or do you want me? Do you think we'll need a pointer if we need it? Okay. We have a PowerPoint, well, 3D rendering for you on the, on the screen. Oh, sorry.
I may put you in the dark because I'm not sure which one it is.
There you go. All right, and they're going to try and follow along with the staff report. We may have to pause to let it load up a little bit. But this is the historic courthouse on West Main Street. The applicant is Kathy Trejo and I have Sarah here as well from Garmin Miller Architects and Engineers. They're requesting the planning commission to review the proposal for the redesign of the Miami County Courthouse Plaza located at 215 West Main Street. The redesign includes the area around the courthouse and the plaza between the courthouse and the Miami County Safety Building. This property is zone B2 General Business District, while the plaza between the building is zone B3 Central Business District. On April 10th, 2019, the planning commission approved the proposal to remove the prior existing concrete fountains, walkways, and curbs. The applicant is now seeking approval for the overall redesign of the plaza. Exhibits A and B in your packet have been attached to show the overall redesign of the project, while Exhibit A is the base bid for the project. Exhibit B is an alternate bid. The difference between these two, as you can see, are going to be a set of brick pavers that are mirroring the original design of Exhibit A in that transition piece between the safety building and the courthouse. And we've broke down each item for you so you can see what the items are. The first portion is the fountain. If you remember, there are two, or were two, concrete fountains that have been removed. The applicant is proposing installing one large fountain located in the front of the courthouse along West Main Street. This will include 10 relocated stone columns from previous fountains along with a sandstone pavement or pavers for the fountain floor. This will only, this will be the only fountain on the courthouse property. Before you go to the next slide, can I ask questions interrupt you? Yes, sir. The plan that's being presented today. As it stands today, we have a stone wall, so to speak, right adjacent to the sidewalk that people come in and sit down on. Is this a replacement for that stone wall? The, yes, sir, we'll get that here in just a little bit, but to answer your question, yes. The, the stone, stone slash concrete wall that's along the front, where the brick is at is what will be removed. We have another exhibit that shows the linear footage as being removed. On the left end is the wall that remains, is that correct? Yes. And some of the pieces that are being removed from where this, you're seeing brick is going to be used on other portions of the wall to replace and repair and rehab. Short wall where the brick is right now, is that fence on the backside, the front side? Can somebody sit their keister down on it or not? Was it in the middle?
Not here, but you can sit on all walls that are on the site. At least this wall is a retaining wall and you can't be sat on.
And I think that's due to the height.
Right, and there's crown cover and a slope in front of it. This is just an edge, but these are height, seat height.
Gotcha, and how high will that short wall be?
That one?
Yeah, how high is that?
It ranges from about 24 inches to 16 inches.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Not a problem.
All right, so the common walkways, proposed materials for the common walkways will be a mix of concrete and clay pavers. These are modular bell crest, 350 and 750. Thought we had the samples. As shown in Exhibit A and B, alternate bid will also include the two-sided areas of the brick that flank the shown plaza in between the safety building and the courthouse. And these will be in a design pattern. If I remember correctly from the, from our previous meeting, that design pattern actually matches the floor inside the courthouse. They're showing the same floor pattern inside the building of the courthouse as, as well in that brick. Yes, sir.
So clarify for me. Exhibit A, Exhibit B, which one is the plan and which one is the alternate?
Elaborate on that one?
Sure. I don't know what you're looking at, but...
The difference between Exhibit A, which is without the...
Base bid, this would be concrete here and here.
Okay, so that's...
So the alternate is to add the brick.
Yes, Exhibit B should have the two, those two sections showing brick. I'm sorry.
Exhibit B does not show the brick.
Should re-review this. Okay, Exhibit A is actually showing the, Exhibit A is actually the secondary bid with the added brick. And Exhibit B is the base bid showing the concrete. That's the Exhibit A.
Okay.
Is that what, is that what's with the proposal?
That's the alternate.
Sorry.
This is an alternate here. That's the only alternate. This, here's the base bid, this is concrete. And then if you look at the screen where that's currently concrete on your Exhibit B, then in our alternate we get brick.
Okay, is that the only departure from, is the alternate, is that the only alternate? Yes. Gotcha. Thank you for the interpretation. Go ahead. And sorry about that. The next item will be the fencing. The proposed redesign will showcase a historic black round bow and hairpin steel picket fence, two feet in height, located along the front half of the wall, enclosing the fountain area and along the walkway from West Main Street. Again, that's what we were just touching on, from the original design of the stone and concrete wall to the brick. Again, that's the hairpin and bow steel black fencing that they are proposing. And that's only along West Main Street. Next item will be the benches. With the redesigned plaza, they will be showcasing five black traditional Scarborough-style benches placed in the southeast and northern open spaces. The benches will be six feet in length in a surface mount style. See, that's bolted down. Again, those are in the southeast and northern open spaces for pedestrian and customer use. Since you're sitting right there, I'm going to skip ahead and I'll circle back. The lighting, proposed lighting will result with the freestanding lights being removed and replaced with two acorn-style lights and a black decorative base with floodlights in the center. These lights are located around the courthouse as shown in Exhibit E. Also, black Ashbury Ballard-style lights will be installed and located in the open spaces located in the northeast and southeast corners. As you can see here, that is a rendering of how those Ballard-style lights will be placed for those walkways in the open spaces. And then you can also see...
You said Exhibit E?
Yeah, Tim, get me on that one, too.
Are you on F, maybe?
Yeah, that'll be Exhibit, I'm sorry. Exhibit E does show some of the locations of the, that's more of the larger map, but Exhibit E or F also shows the taller acorn-style lights. That's why we wanted to show the rendering here for you, so you can see. Those smaller lights, those are down lights? Yes, sir, those are more for the pedestrian pathways where the acorn lights will have a larger light spread. We'll go over to the, back up to the landscaping. Proposed landscaping plan calls for various ornamental trees and shrubs throughout the property. Goes to keep as many of the existing mature trees on, on this site as possible while incorporating complimentary new plants as listed in the planning plan. I'm going to say that's Appendix C. The existing concrete wall that surrounds the north and west property will remain. However, several areas will be repaired with the removal pieces of the wall from the south as shown in Appendix D. The existing south concrete wall will be removed and replaced with the brick wall as we have shown in Appendix A. And what we were just touching on. On the appendix, they did list out, like I said, the linear footage, which was 76 linear feet, will be salvaged and reinstalled and used to repair and close off some of the older openings for the concrete wall and block wall that, that will be remaining around the rest of the site. Drainage grates and covers. The drainage pattern grates will be installed in the fountain ends and will consist of a raw bronze finish. Bronze pavers are placed in various locations for site drainage. A sample will be provided. I think they're in the media room. I'm sorry, if you, if you want to see the samples, I will grab those for you real quick.
You're talking about this somewhere here?
Yes, sir. We do have pictures in your packet of those pavers and grates. For the signage, signage will be displayed on the building as shown in F, Exhibit F, titled Wayfinding Plan. There will be four wall signs placed on the property. However, only one of which will count against the building's sign allowance. This sign will consist of Miami County Safety Building. It will be on the south wall facing West Main Street. The sign will measure 15 square feet, which is well under the proposed, or the maximum allowance for the building. A similar sign will be above the door facing the plaza reading Miami County Sheriff, as well as one that reads Miami County Courthouse, placed at the courthouse entrance. This one is the one through the safety building and the sheriff's office facing the plaza. Their entrances into the justice building. And then we have the courthouse entrance signage that they'll have displayed at their actual entrances there at the stairs. The incidental signs, there will be 11 wayfinding signs throughout the property to help direct the customers to the correct entrances since there are multiple stairways that are no longer used around the historic courthouse. So the incidental signs will help move pedestrians and pedestrian traffic around, around the site. Would you, Mr. Wolke, please? And we have a bunch of bricks over here, too. These 11 wayfinding signs will be installed on a black aluminum bracket made out, with the signage made out of HPPE, which is high-density polyurethane, polyurethane, PVC-style material. There will be a bronze-colored finish. Signs are, again, used to help direct patrons that use these buildings in this site around to the appropriate locations and entrances. Move on to historical markers. On the site, the proposal is to have four historical markers. These are on Exhibit F entitled Wayfinding Plan. These markers will be on a pedestal base, as seen here in the 3D rendering, with each one explaining and giving a description of the statues on top of the courthouse. Moving on to, I'm sorry, you want to...
In the close-up of the trees.
And again, each, each sign will correlate to the statue at the top of the courthouse that it's facing. Moving on to the trash receptacles. Trash receptacles, we can be located throughout the site and be colored black. There is a photo in your packet. They're metal-style replacing the older outdated metal and stone pea gravel look that's currently on the site. The attachment is labeled Exhibit G. And those, again, will be in a black color. Other items for note, the police memorial that is currently in the northeast corner of the courthouse plaza, that will be relocated. The idea is to relocate the markers and the bench and, and the actual monument to the northeast open space area instead of the corner of the courthouse. And then we also have proposed handrails that will be made of wrought iron and in black color. Any other questions? Yeah, starting with questions. I'm going to start you off with the signage. I don't see anything in here about the material being used for the signage with the incidental signage and the historic markers. So the incidental signs is HPD, HDPE, it's a high-density polyurethane, kind of a PVC-style, it's a long-lasting material. A lot of the signs that the store commission has seen in the past several months have been of that material for wall signage. It's pretty durable. Like I said, it'll have that bronze, bronze look with, I believe it was supposed to have a textured background to look like wood.
It's going to be rather to look like it was a bronze black.
And the same with the historic markers?
The historic markers are actually bronze blacks.
Okay. Yeah, so the... And the base is going to be white?
That is painted aluminum.
Painted aluminum, right, thank you. And the markers on the courthouse will also look the same. So the entrance signs for the courthouse steps and will all match and look that, that bronze color. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, several, thank you. Just to keep on the signage, the, the wall signs for the safety building, those are just going to be the lettering attached directly to the wall?
Yes.
No background, no?
Correct.
Okay. So then my other, my other question is, you know, I think this all looks great. One consideration, I'm not sure, just want to make sure that you, you took into account is, well, two things. Number one, as part of the renovation, reconstruction of West Main Street, our intention, at least at this point, is to look at extending the streetscapes farther west to be at least to Plum Street. We've got a, you know, a very distinct architecture, or I don't know what you'd call it, but...
We actually got the plans from Jill and incorporated that into the model. So this is the, your future from this brick and concrete look?
Great, so that's fantastic. And related to that, then the lighting, the light poles, are they the same, same look, generally speaking?
On our site?
Yeah.
The one, the ones that are in your packet, there are eight poles around the courthouse. The double-headed acorn is what we have.
And how will they, how will they look compared to the ones that are part of the street?
They're actually from the same manufacturer and they're very similar.
Great.
The globe is just a slight difference.
Cool, that's good to know. Then the other, the only other question I've got is you've got Hayner that is to, directly to the west of the courthouse. They just did some significant renovations, the brick, the brick color. I know it's going to be distinctive and it should be, but how is that going to look compared to the Hayner? You know, are they going to complement each other? They, was there any consideration made?
You're talking about this side, correct?
That's, yes, that side across the street where they're, they just did, what, three, three different little...
Yeah, they also did some wayfinding-style signs.
Wayfinding signs as well, yeah.
This side of the courthouse is actually very green and not a whole lot of hardscape, so we hope that it will complement well. The pavement in front of these steps is actually gone, so this is mostly green space and not much else.
And, and since I was the one that did the staff report for Hayner, I know one of the colors was the dark brown and light tan, which should complement the bronze and brick colors.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff or the presenters?
Will the stairs to the courthouse still be closed to public access?
We are actually, you're talking about these stairs, correct?
Yep.
So the chains that are at the bottom of each step are actually being moved up to the first landing so that this whole first bridge can be used as an amphitheater. So we're moving the chains up halfway.
Use this or what?
Like an amphitheater or staging space. People can actually sit on this portion of each step.
Wedding photos. Any other questions? Yes. Well, I will say that since I didn't give the recommendation, staff does recommend the approval of the proposed project. That's what I'm saying, thank you, have that. Okay, thank you, thank you. Commission want to take any action?
I'm going to approve. No support.
Motion second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wolke? Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Capper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Approved.
Next, uh, on the agenda.
Lights are coming up.
Preliminary plan application, staff have reported.
Yes, we do. Park Den Leonard, a partner in three gen D OLC, has applied to the Planning Commission to consider a new single-family subdivision adjacent to the Heritage at Troy Country Club subdivision. Uh, the land is currently undeveloped. Recently, City Council did approve a rezoning request, uh, for this parcel. It did have county zoning and now has been reserved to our four single-family. Um, the developer is proposing to create a new subdivision named Heritage Village at Troy Country Club. The preliminary, preliminary plan is the first step in the process for approval. Proposed subdivision consists of entirely a single-family homes, encompasses ten point seven three zero acres and includes twenty-two buildable lots that range from point two four one acres to point eight two five. Uh, the proposed subdivision would be developed in one lot. Access to the, to the development would be provided by two separate points. The west access point off of Peters will align with existing intersection of Hillcrest Drive. The second access point located to the east of the proposed development connects to the existing roadway and Creekwood Neighborhood. The internal roadway system consists of a cul-de-sac named Legacy Court, which stems off the main road named Robinson Way. The Assistant City Engineer and Assistant Fire Chief have reviewed this and indicated that they have no issues with the proposed roadway layout. For utilities, the development will be served by city water and sewer. The plan seems to, uh, seeks to mitigate storm water control by utilizing a detention area located in the north portion of the development. Maintenance of that storm detention, um, facility would be the responsibility of the property owners on the north, uh, part of that subdivision. For parkland, uh, the developer is not proposing to provide any parkland within the subdivision. This has been brought before the park board with a, um, positive recommendation to accept fees in lieu of parkland. The housing values, um, will range from three hundred and seventy-five thousand to five hundred thousand. Staff recommends that Planning Commission accept the proposed preliminary plan as it's in accordance with the zoning code, subdivision regulations, and other engineering standards.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Shannon, uh, you said the proposed subdivision will be developed in a single lot. You mean.
Single phase.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, it's going to be twenty-two lots, twenty-two buildable lots.
Correct.
All at once.
Any, any other questions? Commission want to take action?
Move for approval.
Is there support for the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Cappers?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Approved.
We're now down to that other matters agenda item, and I do have an other matter before us. Who wants to address that from staff?
Yes, sir. Uh, before you, I gave out a memo that Tim Davis prepared, uh, as, as it says, at our last commission meeting, we had a workday facilitated by Yarden Company. In there is a written draft which summarizes the discussion, outlines recommendations for the planning commission. This is seeking some feedback from you, so if you would like to get your comments and things back to us, we, we get that over to Yarden Company as well and hopefully get it formalized.
And in the meantime, staff will review this and make comments as well?
Yes, sir.
Definitely. Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
If you will take a look at the memorandum and, and give Robert an email, perhaps you're Tim Davis an email concerning any comments you might have. Anything else to come before the commission today? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there support?
Second.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? You stand adjourned.